Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meeting live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the twentieth meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners for nineteen -- oh, this is 2001, wow, June 7th. A thought for the day is attributed to Stowe, it says, "Common sense is the knack of seeing things as they are and doing things as they ought to be done." Madam Clerk?
Okay, under resolutions, I need a motion to approve the job and family services bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? What is it now? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Nineteen ninety-nine, Roxy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, it's gonna be one of those meetings.
Yeah, it's gonna be. Appropriations?
Well, hold on a minute. I'm sorry.
All these had a note to hold them till next week and I just talked with Jim.
Yes.
It was supposed to be on one, not all of these.
Okay, fine. What did he want to help? I looked at all of them.
I didn't look at them either. I saw a hold.
That was a note that I had on one from about three or four weeks ago that I called from Columbus and had put back into the package for appropriation for union pay raises. We have completed the contract, so I asked to have that put back in. They didn't take the note off and then it got stuck on a package.
Is there transfers in there too?
This has nothing to do with it.
I'm not asking to hold, right, I'm not asking to hold any transfers at all this week and I apologize for that.
What about appropriations? I think there's some of those.
Appropriations.
Are those all transfers?
The one that I had--
There's some in there.
Right, the one I had the note on was an appropriation for union pay increases. We just completed the union contracts and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with all the appropriations and transfers that are in the package.
But I had only seven pages on appropriations. This one said there's twenty-two pages.
Well, that's the rest of it.
One of twenty-two.
Somebody had the package. One of--
No, this is one of twenty-two. And I have one of seven. I have seven and the ones I signed off on.
One package is appropriations, one package is transfers.
Appropriations had seven. And then this one here said, "Don't sign on it," which is what you're saying was only one piece of paper, not the whole lot of them.
Right.
Here's the seven.
Yeah, here's the seven here.
Those are appropriations or transfers, Commissioner?
Appropriations.
These are all appropriations. Oh, those are mixed. These are mixed also.
Okay, I got a good answer.
Hold until next week. Give it to us.
We didn't meet last week and they were numbered from last week. One stack is from last week, one stack is from this week.
So--
John, you're back there, help me out.
You're on your own.
I haven't seen him yet.
That's why they're numbered independently.
I'll tell you what, I think, should we come back to this, why the three of us?
Certainly.
Before the end of the meeting, maybe, or what?
I don't get it right now.
That would be fine.
Right now, okay.
I've already looked at them. I went through them. I saw the hold and I didn't know, but I thought if there, I looked at this week for next week, so I don't have--
I'll hold it.
Okay, what's this? This is, okay.
Why are you signing this?
Okay. Betty needs this. I'll tell you, we'll start with you since you, you gotta sign it. If you wanna sign it.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe--
I'll give you the whole package. Do it this way.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you.
You're on.
Thank you.
You already, you didn't sign on any of these though, Jim?
The one of, the one of twenty-two?
Yeah. You already reviewed them now?
I reviewed them last week.
Okay.
John, I have a question on this linkage. It's twelve thousand six hundred and twelve and then another twelve hundred dollars. What account is that being appropriated? It's twenty-one, three oh two.
May I see it, Commissioner?
Yes.
Thanks. Yes, this is special revenue fund, what we call special revenue fund two thirteen, linkages, non-general fund appropriation. There's adequate monies--
So it's being appropriated within their own--
That's correct, Commissioner, within their own certificate of estimated resources within that own particular fund and it's in anticipation of contracts and supplies. Yes?
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
I have a question on this one appropriating the interest earned on the grant monies in the sheriff's department. They get interest on there? Is this grant money, is that separate?
May I see the--
There's two of them.
Equipment? Equipment. Okay. Yeah, it's been a practice to, they're relatively small sums and it's been a practice to appropriate to that particular fund, two twenty-seven, to enhance their position.
Yeah, you're not obligated to do that, it's just been a practice.
Right.
It's adopted by the board to give us interest money on the grant monies.
Go ahead, I'll catch up with you. I got a couple.
Mr. Moore?
What are we on now?
Appropriations.
Appropriations. I say aye with the exception to page seven D of seven F.
And what were those?
Somewhere in the pile.
What was it again, please?
I just said aye.
Seven E and seven F?
Oh, seventy-five thousand was for the architect.
No, 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 no. It's the auditor, twenty-six thousand three hundred and five dollar general fund appropriation and the auditor real estate assessment.
And one I got.
Are those, those are the numbers I wrote down, if I have it correctly.
I think I wrote that down. I didn't sign it. I wrote that down as a discussion for John, I think he talked to me this morning on that.
Is that the transfers for the five percent?
Yeah, I think, yeah, 'cause you didn't sign it, but it said okay with your name on it.
I reviewed those and then I put the packages out as the commissioners and myself were down in Columbus. I didn't wanna hold up the process, I let people sign, so that's why I didn't get those signed before when they came back on, after the draft was done.
That wasn't actually five percent. It was two percent, wasn't it?
Well, correct. We've concluded the contract, extensions and negotiations with--
They already had the three percent in their account, it was just, they needed another two percent.
That's correct, Commissioner, we're just making the difference for the total of five, yes, ma'am.
So that, those aren't, that isn't the one though? It's seven D?
Yeah, it was seven D of seven F. I don't know what Ds and Fs are, but Ds--
But that is seventy-five thousand for the Justice Center, two construction.
What were your thoughts on that? I mean, the architect did do the additional work. Do you think that should've been included in what they're being paid now?
Nah, just, they told me they weren't gonna charge us, so that's just gonna be a, he said, he said issue, so I have a feeling I'm just not gonna, I'm gonna hold my ground on that one.
So do you feel like we should negotiate?
Oh, I don't think we should pay it at all, but--
Well, do you wanna negotiate with them?
If we ask them to come out here, they're gonna charge us again to negotiate.
No, maybe Jim--
But if Mr. Cordez would talk to them, maybe that would be appropriate.
Is that what the appropriation is for?
Yes, Commissioner, that's what the appropriation is for. I anticipate another bill coming in too, so--
I thought this was through the new work that we're asking them to do, not the old work.
No, Commissioner, this is, well, yes and no, it depends on how you look at the question.
It says open P.O.
It is an open P.O. This is for the--
Cost reduction study.
Well, it's for the gyrations that we've gone through in the last two or three months concerning alternative resolutions to getting the Justice Center underway. There's obviously been some billing for that and I need to take care of those bills. I do know Mr. Moore's position, I was at a meeting with Mr. Moore when he told him that they should do the work for free. His position has been well known.
I think he mentioned it here.
Yes, he did, and I think he saw them all looked astonished and stunned because I don't believe they thought he was serious. I know him, I knew he was serious when he spoke with them.
But value engineering should've been part of the cost to start with, so maybe we do have some reason for negotiations here. I mean, that should've been part of the ongoing study for the Justice Center.
If it's the board's pleasure that I attempt to negotiate down these fees with the architect, I will do so.
Can we hold these until Jim gets a chance to talk with them?
You can, you can, you can hold that or--
Yes, on everything, make an exception to that. That means we're not gonna pay for it and Jim can negotiate and it--
How about we do this? The transfer is, in itself, is fairly innocuous. It's the paying of the bill--
It's the appropriation.
The appropriation, correct.
That's what I have except--
It really, it really, doesn't do anything until we pay the bill. I will endeavor to negotiate down their fee, but I'm not gonna be able to negotiate it down to zero. They're going to have to be paid, so we're gonna have to revisit this issue if you don't appropriate some money over to that account. Plus, there is going to be some additional work in the revised plans that are gonna have to be paid for. I will wrestle with that issue and try to bring those fees down, but I'm still gonna require some additional appropriation to pay whatever we, whatever the meeting of the minds is in that process. And because this is a lengthy process and because getting the appropriations and finally getting the bills paid and then delaying them with negotiations, I'm asking that we go ahead and appropriate some money and I will do due diligence to bring that bill down to a more acceptable level for at least a majority of this board and that we be prepared to pay whatever it is. It's hard to go into negotiation where you don't have anything.
Well, they're getting seven percent of a forty-six million dollar contract. I think if they wanna keep us happy, then--
I will certainly, I will certainly remind them of that. That may be one of my strategy discussion points.
Nothing to negotiate with? I think you'd--
Well, when you go in and--
I'd like to, if they wanna have a public discussion on whether or not they said it, I don't have a problem having that either, 'cause I'll pull my notes from the meeting.
Oh, I was there with you. I fully understood your position.
I know. Just see what they think. We haven't asked them, I guess.
I have.
Well, then, and they're saying--
And their answer was they didn't believe that you were serious. Okay, I--
I guess I've ever become less humorous and be--
Well, I don't think you were humorous, I just don't know that they, you know, people take things differently in each issue and it was just you and I with the architects that day with Mr. Ocasie. Once again, I will attempt to bring that bill down to a more acceptable level and I will use certain strategies and remind them of certain situations. But I'm, if you wanna hold up on the appropriation, that's fine. I will turn my attention to that next week and see how I can bring closure to that issue.
Mrs. Blair?
I already voted aye.
Mr. Moore?
I already voted aye with the exception of seven D of seven F.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye with the same exception.
Transfers?
Was there a transfer on that also?
Yeah, there was, but I guess it doesn't matter now.
It's moved.
Moved, yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
There are no advances today. Requisitions?
I'd like to move for approval with the, I would like to hold one item, it's thirteen oh five dash oh one, it's rent at six five seven Broadway from the domestic relations department and--
Six five--
Yes. I spoke to Mr. Cordez briefly this morning and we do have the availability of that building behind Saint Joseph was offered to us and I would just like him to see if that might fit their needs as opposed to us renting something. So if you could just hold that for one week till he investigates. If not, that's up to you.
I agree to hold it. And then I would like to discuss twelve seventy-nine and twelve eighty-one. One was for reimbursement for mercury spill. I didn't understand that.
The reimbursements are, we had to collect shoes and socks and--
But these are for employees, reimbursements to employees.
Right, and some of our employees were affected by that spill. The one that quickly comes to mind is Ms. McPhee who was contaminated upon trying to coordinate, coordinate, excuse me. When she was over there inspecting the area, she picked up some contaminants on some of her clothing and shoes and they had to be bagged and disposed of. And these are reimbursements for those, for those lost property items.
Okay, and then twelve eighty-three. I didn't write what that one was, but--
Madam Clerk, would you pull that, please?
My question was, should it have been paid by, through the levy, from the levy?
Well--
Oh, that was the health department.
Okay, on the HVAC for the health department.
Aye.
You and I discussed that and they are tenants in our building and my position was that we had a practice of always paying for things on our building, but that I would look into and we spoke yesterday, I haven't discussed that with Ken Pearson, people at the health department yet.
Well, talk to Jerry or Bob about it, because I thought at some point we were discussing the law being changed where they would be paying for their own building and maintenance.
They've always had the ability to pay for maintenance. I know the law changed with respect to the health department, more significantly with the county boards of education. In fact, they have picked up certain maintenance costs out at the health department previous, previously over the last few years. It's just been our practice to maintain the infrastructure of the building. I'm more than willing to discuss with them possibly contributing more funds to that issue. I just wasn't able to do that between our discussion yesterday and this morning.
Right. Okay, so would the board mind holding up on that until Jim talks to them? What was the amount?
Yeah, I believe it was two or three thousand dollars for some maintenance repair work.
Just for a week?
Yeah, that's fine. I just need a little time to discuss the issue with them.
So twelve eighty-three we're holding up and thirteen oh five we're holding up per week?
Twelve eighty-three.
Okay, that's okay, that's okay. We can hold a week.
What was the--
One thousand fourteen seventy-eight was that time? That was the number you gave.
Yeah, this is it.
Okay.
What is the amount? One thousand fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Just wait a week on twelve eighty-three and thirteen oh five? Not a problem with that.
Are you seconding that motion?
Pardon?
Are you seconding that?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
We are going to have an executive session, so we will hold any action until after that time.
Okay. I'd like to award bids on various categories of food items for Golden Acres Company home for the period of July first, two thousand one, through December thirty-first, two thousand one. All the awards are the lowest and most responsive bids received complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
We are going to have an executive session, so we will hold any action until after that time.
Okay. I'd like to award bids on various categories of food items for Golden Acres Company home for the period of July first, two thousand one, through December thirty-first, two thousand one. All the awards are the lowest and most responsive bids received complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd like to approve and enter into renewal agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Louis Vernoversky of Alariah, Ohio to clean fourth over single ditch number eleven forty-one Carlisle Township. This initial agreement was entered into in nineteen eighty-nine in lieu of a maintenance assessment. Mr. Vernoversky is the owner most affected by the ditch and at that time, there was not enough money in the account to clean the ditch. The owner will be paid two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from the fourth over ditch maintenance account as approved by the county engineer. The Lorain County engineer finds it necessary to continue the maintenance of said ditch and recommends approval of this renewal agreement. Mr. Ennis, the Assistant County Prosecutor, has reviewed and has prepared the agreement for signature. Mr. Hamilton, sir, do you have any questions?
Does the board have any questions for John?
What's it? No, I didn't know if that was part of this.
Oh. He's giving me a love note back. Second.
Do you have any more discussion?
How long is this contract for? Bob, do you know? Do we know how long this is for?
John Hamilton will probably answer that question.
It's for ten years.
It's another ten years?
Yeah. It started back in eighty-nine, it just needed to be cleaned, there wasn't enough money in the account. Mr. Vernoversky is most affected by the ditch and he offered the cleaning in exchange for what was in the account plus so much a year. So it needs to be cleaned again. The only thing we've really added was forty-eight hours notice so we can inspect the ditch cleaning and they have a profile attached to make sure it gets cleaned where it belongs.
So this is two hundred and eighty-five bucks a year for ten years, pretty much, right? Are we paying him twenty-eight fifty for--
There's a lump sum payment and then so much a year for ten years. Twenty-eight fifty.
So for a total of twenty-eight fifty?
Yeah.
Okay, so the end amount is twenty-eight fifty over ten years?
Right.
Okay.
It runs right through his property, really doesn't affect anybody but him.
Okay.
And the maintenance assessments are pretty low on the other properties.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to rescind resolution number zero one dash four forty-six, excuse me, adopted May tenth, two thousand one, which approved a change order to refrigeration specialists to replace four H vac units at the correctional facility. Too much time has elapsed from the first request for the change order in February and this resiling is not required.
Well, I have a question. If too much time has elapsed, is the work going to be done or not going to be done?
It might've already been done.
Yes to Commissioner Blair and no to Commissioner Moore. The work is going to be done and no, the work has not been previously done. We're folding it into a different contract. I was holding off on those four HVAC units. As the board knows, a lot of people have been in here that wanna assist us, First Energy, Honeywell, Johnson Controls, they all wanna do HVAC work whereby they do the engineering, they install certain equipment, then they lease it back to us and they actually provide the comfort of buildings and they maintain those infrastructure. Every time I meet with them, they're all excited about doing things, they just never seem to get off the ground and get things accomplished. And I had sent them out to the correctional facility, I think on your request, Mr. Moore, when First Energy was in and they had some changes in personnel and they kinda dropped the bullet on it. By the time we revisited the issue, they already done the other work under the previous contract, so we weren't able to capture these four units, but we will capture them in a future contract coming up, so the work still needs to be done, Commissioner Blair, to answer your question.
So if it still needs to be done, why is this being canceled?
Because the contract that we were putting the change order on was already concluded before we revisited, after First Energy was given their shot to work with us and we didn't want to try to open up a contract that had been completed already. So we simply, we canceled the change order and we will include it in a different contract to have those units put in. In addition to that, I'm having some discussion with the architects concerning additional fees for the adding of this work and I'm trying to negotiate those fees down right now too.
Oh, good. So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd like to approve and enter into a participation agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of sodium chloride, which is rock salt, for the two thousand one, two thousand two winter season. An estimated nine thousand tons will be delivered, stockpiling three hundred tons at the Columbia Township Garage and three thousand tons at the Lorain County Garage. The county requests forty-eight hour delivery without piler and requires a five percent bonding from the awarded vendor.
Also moved. Second.
Discussion?
We just wanna comment that this is about the fourth or fifth year that we participated in this joint purchasing with the Ohio Department of Transportation and the first year there were some disbelievers, but the price was five dollars and sixty cents a ton less than what we paid the year before, so this has certainly been a cost-saving measure for Lorain County and also those members of the Alliance who participate in this joint purchasing.
Okay, Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?[1551.12]
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd to authorize the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services to purchase software services for their access data system. Three bids were received, and Kimberly Foez from Advanced Computer Connections Incorporated of New Rock, Ohio, appears to be the best candidate for the job. She has already developed two of the programs that they are requesting, and will only need to adapt them to the county's needs. Total cost for all the projects is $8,350, which is within the limits of the Regional Organizational Development and Training Committee grant that's been approved for this project, for this purpose. I'd to authorize Mary Lugolski, the Director of the Job and Family Services, to execute the contract on behalf of the Commissioners, with approval as to form by the prosecutor's office. Mary Lou, sir, if you have any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd to approve various changes in the Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Plan for the Job and Family Services Department, effective June 1st, 2001. The PRC Developmental Reserve funding awarded in the amount of $6.8 million will end June 30th, 2001.
I think, Mary Lou, you need to make some comments on this. Natalio?
Natalio.
Natalio Rodriguez, thank you. Good morning, Natalio.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Natalio Rodriguez, R-O-D, R-I-Q-U-E-Z. I'm the Administrative Assistant at Human Services, while Lorraine County Jobs and Family Services, I should say. We see a need, we have to make a change in our PRC program. At the end of June, we'll be losing $6.8 million from the state. That had, for the past about two years, has provided many services. Some of those services were contracted out, some of those services were also provided in-house. The state also is probably telling us, and we really don't, we don't know actually our allocation, so what we've done is took the PRC program and kind of went to a bare-bones program, and trying to operate like we've done in the past. Excuse me. So we've changed some of our areas on the program, took our poverty level from 175% and dropped it down to 150%. Our resources from 500 down to $100. And we'll continue to provide some of the services that we are doing. Our job training, items for people who will be trying to become self-sufficient, we'll still have those contingency items in there, and helping pay rent, with helping utility costs. We also will still be providing some refrigerators. One of the big changes that we've seen, we've gotten a lot of phone calls on it, that we won't be providing school clothes this year. That money was, that money was took out of that $6.8 million in the past. So that's a big change for us. It was a very successful program, there's no way we have those funds for that. And a lot of our after-school programs that we've provided through the, what we call the developmental money, those will no longer be in place. We will run the summer programs with three agencies that we have. And we've also suspended some of the programs we've done until we know if we'll see any of those funds come from the state.
Thank you, Natalio. Are there any questions at the board here?
Yeah. Natalio, do you expect further cuts?
It's hard, right now it's hard to say until we know our funds. They've been about 300,000 to 400,000 in the past. We should be able to run this with, this program, what's in front of you, if you have my PRC plan, with that money, and with our, within these guidelines. If the state comes back and says we can have more money, then we're gonna, we'll make some changes and come back to you on those.
Can they do that during?
Yeah, oh yeah, we can make changes, we can make changes, which we have to, throughout the year.
What determines the funds? The amount of funding that you receive?
Well, it's what the state says, that's from your allocated share, what the state says that you can use for those services.
Okay. Can you explain what's happening with Project THAW?
Project THAW? We took 2,200 applications for the county. We've probably, well, we've probably have over half of those certified, we're starting to pay those bills.
Will 2002 be paid?
2002, we should have money for that, from the state, to pay those bills. Some of them have been denied because people were over income, but we were able to pay. Out of those applications, I can tell you that there was about 700, a little bit over 700 in what we call non-family households. The state provided money for both non-family and family households. So we're able to pay bills for those people who met that. 200% of the poverty is pretty high, so that was pretty good on that, as long as they provided us what their bill. And, but we should have enough money to pay all those bills, from what we see in the state.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Natalio. I'll so move for approval.
I'll second.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd to approve and enter into the following contracts, Lorraine County Job and Family Services. The first is with Lorraine County Children and Families Council, purchase of service contract, PRC Developmental Reserve, for summer programs for eligible children, effective June 1st, 2001 to June 30th, 2001. Amendment number four, for Lorraine County Family YMCA, purchase of service contract, PRC Developmental Reserve for after-school and summer programs, a contract period ending June 30th, 2001. Amendment will reflect an increase in the value from $150,000, but not to exceed $513,000. This increase shall be at the cost of $8.05 per unit, and a unit is defined as one hour of activity. Other provisions of the contract will remain in effect. I'd to authorize the President to execute on behalf of the board.
I have a question.
Mary Lou, I'm thinking you can answer this for me. It seems to me like Agenda Items 16 and 17, between the two, we're spending less for protective services than we are for after-school, summer youth programs. It just doesn't seem right. It seems like protective services should take priority. Unless there's more youth than there are people that need adult services.
The reason, Mary Lugolski, G-O-L-S-K-I, the reason that we don't commit a large sum of money to protective services for children is because you have a levy in Lorraine County?
No, I'm saying for adults. The next one is for adults. 17.
Right. Those are Title 20 services, for Genesis House, their shelter, the domestic violence shelter, and the other one is the homeless shelter at Neighborhood House. That pot of money is smaller, and that's, the Title 20 dollars, we're anticipating a 15%, up to a 15% reduction in Title 20 dollars, so we're not going to increase our contracts next year for Title 20. We're just, we made a decision that we would continue to fund those services at last year's level. Number 16 is actually dealing with unspent PRC DR dollars, and we're taking monies that were not spent in this fiscal year, and we're making a commitment to the Y and the Children and Family First Council, so that they can do summer programming using this year's funding, because next year, if we were to use next year's money, there is no money.
But can the PRC money be used for the adult protective services?
No, no. PRC money always has to be targeted to families. So the protective services for adults are adults, it's not families. The shelter cost actually goes towards the adult, even though they may take their family, but the domestic violence shelter is for adults. They may have kids with them, but we're paying for a night of lodging for that adult. The same thing is true at Neighborhood House.
So then the bottom line is, each one of these are individual funding, that it can only be used for these certain purposes?
Title 20 can be used for about 22 different services.
But that's all the money that's available for these?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, Mary Lou.
I'll so move for approval on item number 16.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
And authorize the following services be purchased using the Lorraine County Job and Family Services Title 20 allocation for fiscal year 2002. For Neighborhood House Association, protective services for adults, $105,000. For Safe Harbor, protective services for adults, $24,000. The Volunteer Guardship Program, protective services for adults, $11,000. Heritage Home Health, for Homemaker, home health aids, $60,000. Handle With Care, Home Health, for Homemaker of Home Health Aids, $60,000. And Catholic Charities, Adult Day Services, for Adult Daycare, $84,000.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'd authorize Mary Lugolski, the Director, to execute the contracts on behalf of the Commissioners as needed, with the County Prosecutor's approval as to form.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd to issue a notice to proceed letter to Crossroads Asphalt of Columbia Station, Ohio, for the City of Sheffield Lakes Richland Roadway, CDBG-funded project, effective June 11th, 2001. This contract was awarded by Resolution Number 01-299, that was adopted April 5th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
I'd to approve the payment schedule for the County General Fund mandated share payable to the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services. Set payment period is for July 2001 through December 2001, which is the first half of fiscal year 2002, with payment of the General Fund set at $100,108 per month, as outlined by Tom Matitek of the Job and Family Services, the Fiscal Administrator. These amounts have been budgeted in the General Fund.
I guess the key word here is mandated. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Oakes. So moved.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
I'd to forgive the salary reimbursement for Tom Kelly, the EMA Director, that's received from the LEPC to the General Fund annually, as required. And EMA will continue to provide whatever support is needed for the LEPC on a day-to-day basis.
Also move.
I question whether that money is really needed. I have some information, and I thought I brought, here it is. Their salaries are only 160, well, 163, not only, 163,000, and that's the total in the budget. I'm sorry, the total in the budget is 230,832, leaving $67,000 for operations and et cetera. The equipment account increased approximately $20,000 this year compared to the last two years. So I have to question whether that money is really needed.
Okay. I didn't bring my correspondence that I sent to the board with me, with the spreadsheet concerning LEPC. What we're looking for is not additional appropriation at this time to EMA. LEPC has been under an arrangement where they have contributed a portion of grant money to the salaries of the employees out there. When that started, we had fewer employees than we do today, and they were making less money, and it was a percentage sharing. What happened last year is LEPC's contribution actually eclipsed the amount they received in grant money, where they had some reserves and they paid from those, and so the entire grant, plus some additional funding, went to their salary commitment to the members of EMA. They came in earlier this year and discussed the possibility of moving only one of those employees off of that split, so that they could have some available resources. I presented to the board with that option.
But they wanted the available resources for equipment. And I'm saying that I believe they have $20,000 more than what they had for the past two years. So why would they need the additional on top of that? And I know the reason they had 20,000 more was because they purchased a truck or something, so that was a one-time expense that they shouldn't have again this year.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. The, I can go back once again and review the numbers. The numbers I saw is that the salary commitment would exhaust the entire grant. LEPC's position has been that, you don't need an LEPC, if all they're doing is giving all the money from the grant money to the county to pay for salaries, why are they meeting and even involved with anything? Because they have no say in anything, because they don't have any funds. I can go back and revisit the issue and look at the numbers again. I thought that I had done that, but obviously, if that was a one-time expense that I missed, I can review it once again.
I'd appreciate it if you do that.
Certainly.
Can we hold up on this issue until Jim reviews it a little further?
There was no second to the motion, so therefore it dies for lack of a second.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you add it to the agenda for next Thursday? Okay, thanks. Sir.
Okay. I'd to approve and enter into memorandum of agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, as cooperating technical partners by sharing information and updating the flood maps. By becoming a cooperating technical partner, the county would then be eligible to apply for assistance through FEMA in performing further studies on drainage ditches. You'd authorize the President to execute on behalf of the board, and Mr. Hamilton's here, if you have any questions.
John, are you, or Mr. Twining, I think probably you should address the situation and update the board on where we stand with the program that we authorized approximately a year and a half ago?
Yeah, John Hamilton, Assistant County Engineer. As part of the master drainage plan, we've been working on studies with USGS on nine ditches around the county, and we've also been working with FEMA, trying to obtain additional money for floodplain studies. And about a month ago, they called, FEMA called, said they had some grant money possibly available. And we had a meeting with them last week, and they indicated that this is the first step to apply for the grant money. We have to get this to them by June 30th, and they'll mail the grant agreements out, and we have to get them, the grant agreement back, application back by July 30th. And this would be money that's available, kind of piggyback on the USGS studies that have already been approved and underway, to come up with 100-year floods for those streams. The USGS is currently doing a 10-year flood profile, so we can place improvements into the model and see what improvements are needed on those streams. The 100-year will kind of go along with Ron's floodplain coordination, because it'll give more accurate elevations for the flood insurance.
John, will match money be needed for these grants?
No. They're 100% grants, there can be local money. Ron has brought up the possibility of using some CDBG money as a match to try to stretch them a little further, but there's no local share required.
Is that the only type of assistance that FEMA will give, is the grants?
At this time, yeah. Yeah, they've kind of, they change the, you know, the availability of funding at this year to year. He indicated they have around 100,000 available statewide.
I think what's interesting about this is that they're willing to give us this grant or talk to us about it because of the base work that's already been done, was authorized by this board, in conjunction with the Engineers' Office and Soil and Water Conservation. Any questions?
This does assist the homeowners in their insurance, too, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah. Right now, there's a large area that's considered Zone 8, that doesn't have elevation established to it. So in order to be placed out of the flood zone, they have to hire a surveyor and prove that their property's not in the flood zone. This will establish an actual elevation, so it'd make it a lot easier for a surveyor if they are required, and the maps will be a lot more detailed, and more than likely show that the homes are in or out of the floodplain.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Also move. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
I'd to adopt the proposal from Voorhees, Sader, Seymour, and Pease, Licensed Attorneys of Cleveland, Ohio, financial specialists, relative to the Lorraine County Port Authority.
Commissioners, I'd just like to say that I'm disappointed that my May 24th suggestion apparently was ignored. I requested that before we take action on Number 22, we reassess the situation, and in fact, ask for RFPs for this work.
Yeah, I think you had some questions, and I did look at it, I believe I did, I might not have signed it, but I've had some comments on there.
I had no question, I had comment. I suggested two courses of action, neither of which was awarding this contract to this firm.
Your suggestions, then, were that we continue to use squires, Saunders and Dempsey's, and I felt that maybe that might be a conflict, since they already work for the county. And the other was, or if the board wishes to consider other options, we invite Lorraine County firms. And I really reviewed this, and I believe this firm has about 300 attorneys, that can handle the bond issues, any issues that might come up, and are probably about the size of squires, I'm not certain, but they're a large firm. And I don't know of any Lorraine County attorneys that are this involved in government.
We don't know until we ask. And we've not asked for proposal from anyone else.
Well, I don't know of a firm in Lorraine County that has 300 attorneys.
Oh, 300 attorneys, only one attorney would be working at a time.
No, they have.
And I still think, in deference to our supposed policy of local preference, that we at least invite those proposals before we award this contract.
Did you see the resumes that they sent to us? Well, I was very impressed with it. They have offices in Columbus, Cincinnati, Cleveland, Washington, DC, Virginia, Alexandria. I was really impressed, so I'll move. Excuse me.
I'll second.
If I may ask, what would this proposal do?
Hire an attorney for the Port Authority? Attorney or attorneys, for probably bond issues and different issues that they would have.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
I'd to adopt Sheriff Stomin's proposal to provide additional deputies for security at the courthouse.
So moved.
Good morning, Sheriff. I think that we ought to identify what the proposal is. I appreciate your motion, Commissioner Moore. It's for five deputies, additional deputies. The sheriff presented a proposal to us, that if he were to have these deputies effective June 3rd through December 31st, the additional cost would be $143,495.80. I read it right now, thank you.
I have some questions.
I'll so move, and then we'll address the questions.
I think, Dave.
Excuse me, I meant a second.
Thank you.
I wrote down the second place. Thank you. Madam Commissioner?
Yes. How many deputies do we have assigned to the courts now?
Commissioner, we have six deputies assigned to the court right now.
So this would give us 11?
Well, what had happened is, I had promoted one court officer to sergeant, and he's on my road patrol right now, and I have hired one intermittent deputy that needs to go back to school, which is John Mowery. So he's presently finishing up his school course, and once he's finished with that, then he would be the seventh person.
So you have, how many now?
About six and a half. Six and one part-time.
So then you will still have 10 and a half deputies assigned to courts?
It'll be 12 if I get these five.
12? 12?
I'll have seven, and the five additional will make it 12 officers.
And they will all be assigned to the courts?
Well, I don't know if you got a chance to read my proposal?
I did.
And there's a lot of areas that are covered in there, obviously the three different locations that we have to cover between the Bobble Building, the courthouse, and the administration building. And I think that's what we're trying to do, is add the security to tighten it up now, because, you know, speaking with the judges, and obviously Commissioner Moore made a trip over and spoke with Judge Zaleski and Mike Woollett, I think he took a tour of everything. And that's why we're trying to add the five guys right now. And with this proposal, I said when the Justice Center becomes one location where we're going to be, then I won't be coming back at that point saying, now we need so many extra deputies to guard the Justice Center. They'll already be in place for that.
Well, my thoughts are, the Justice Center is going to have a security system in it, and we should use less deputies in the Justice Center than what we would need without security.
Well, and they're talking about adding another courtroom right now. We're still going to have to guard 10 courtrooms, and whenever they're in session, we're going to be between 40 and 50 inmates over to that Justice Center every day.
Do you need them whenever they're in session, or do you need one deputy on each floor?
No, we don't need one deputy on each floor. But yes, when the courts are in session, that's my idea, that is our job when the courts are in session, that we are to provide security for the courts. And that's in the revised code.
I understand that, but I mean, do you need a deputy in each courtroom? Because there's only going to be, what, five floors, the most six?
And I'm not looking to assign a deputy in each courtroom, if that's what you're asking.
Well, with 12 deputies.
Well, if you read my proposal again, once again, there's a lot of other duties that I'm talking about in there, too. We don't just do courts here. We take people to state institutions. There's 31 state institutions throughout the state of Ohio, and I'm talking prisons, that we're shuttling inmates back and forth.
But we're doing that now.
Yeah, and that's why we're strapped right now. That's why I'm asking you for five more deputies. This is the problems I'm having. I'm pulling from my road patrol right now to add to my court services, and then the people in the townships, obviously, are suffering, because we hired five additional deputies last year to do the townships, and now I have to pull away from those to do the court services.
Well, we have $200,000 for potential new hires in the budget, and this will drain just about all of it, and that's for the entire county department.
Well, if I might reiterate one other thing, as Commissioner Blair had stated, that figure was correct. If we'd have hired him June 3rd, obviously, that didn't happen. Today's June 7th. So I would be looking to hire him probably the earliest around July 15th. By the time I would do backgrounds and everything else that you have to do on employees. And I figured the cost to be approximately now, about $115,000 for the rest of this year, if they started July 1st, about $115,848. I mean, obviously, we'd have to get with the budget director to figure it out, but I think that's in the ballpark.
And the judges all support this?
Yes, I talked to Judge Zaleski, the administrative judge. Judges are all in support of this. Yes, whatever that one, that's correct.
But will it be for the entire year?
Probably closer to 200...
Yes, about $287,000 for an entire year.
Well, once they're on, they're going to be on as employees, so we'll have to fund that for 2002. We'll have to take that into consideration.
Mr. Cordez, the audience can't hear you.
Sorry. Once they're hired, there'll be a commitment. We're making the commitment, not just for the rest of this year, but for subsequent years, as they'll be brought on and trained as full-time permanent employees, hopefully permanent. So we will need to make the adjustments in the budgetary process that we're working with right now.
And the way the budget's set up, John, the way you propose it, you had these deputies in the plan?
There was a pool commission of $200,000 set aside for general fund departments in general, at the discretion of the commissioners, to use for whatever positions they need. So there's $200,000 pot for this year, if I heard...
So I'm talking about, when we looked at the opening of the Justice Center, was there seven deputies in that proposal? And I think he's asking for five?
I don't have those figures with me.
When we turned the key, I think it was like 10 to 12, but I think we got it down to five.
When we did our operating numbers, there was a significant increase in the amount of deputies that we allotted for. And it would have been in the $250,000 to $300,000 range of additional costs for operations. That's correct, Commissioner Moore.
Captain Maher, did you want to say something?
Chief Deputy Commissioner, that's okay.
You know what, the last time he was here, I just, I apologize. You keep moving up.
Well, thank you. To answer, first to answer, Commissioner Vacy's, when you're talking about the new Justice Center with the security, like the magnetometers, those are only for, as people file in, to detect if they have any type of weapons, but you still have to have officers manning that equipment. So it's not just the bell goes off and a robot comes out and takes the gun away. We have to have the manpower for that. And again, as far as that one meeting we had, like Mr. Cordez was talking about, I believe we had like three full-time, four part-time, and we had two full-time correction officers on that also at that time. That's when we first tried to discuss the manpower issue.
Okay, I may be wrong, but I only envision like two people. There's only going to be one entrance for people to come in where the systems are going to be. So I envisioned two people there, and if the judges need someone in their courtroom, I imagine they would have a button or something they could push to get somebody up there to assist them. I just don't, it just seems to me like the place is going to be filled with uniforms.
Well, those deputies are also going to be transporting. We have medical runs, which they do now. That's why we don't have anybody in the Bobbles Building, the admin building here. We hardly have a deputy over here unless we can cut them free from other duties. So there's a lot of other duties in Sheriff Stamen's proposal that these people are going to be doing, they're not just going to be standing, you know, waiting for something to come up. So there are a lot of things, and there's a lot of transporting to the state facility. So it's like a package ordeal here.
What you're doing right now to make it work, is you're pulling people off the road?
Right now, we are pulling officers from the road that will leave a couple officers out to handle the entire townships in order to add more security to the court, if we've got more prisoners and stuff like that.
How many total deputies do we have now?
You get that figure?
Yes. Just line officers, I have 50 total deputies. And that includes my detective bureau, my community policing officers, my warrant squad, my dare officer, and my civil officers, too. And if you envision there's going to be a bunch of people running around, or standing around that courthouse, that's not going to happen, Commissioner, I can tell you that. We have plenty of jobs to do, and with the 12 officers, we're going to be taxed doing them at that point. I can tell you that for sure.
Well, I'm just going back, my memory goes back to maybe quite a few years, but there was like 28 deputies, and we're going up to 62.
Well, we're not going up, there's 29 road deputies right now, and you were talking 28 before. But I mean, we have a mirage of duties over there, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. I mean, by law, we have to provide security to the courts, by law, we have to serve warrants. But you know, there's a lot of different duties that you have to do. And just to go back to refresh your memory a little bit, in August, I think there was an article in the Chronicle where we did get those extra five deputies. And at that point, you did state that you understood that with the census data going up, and obviously, the population went up 5% from 270-something thousand, 284 now. We are dealing with more issues with more people. And that's when you said you knew that with this, that we would need more officers. And you also noted that with the new county Justice Center set to open in late 2002, there'll be yet another reason to reexamine the needs of the department. What I'm trying to address now is the security needs, because obviously, you know, we had that mercury spill over there, and that place is an accident waiting to happen over there, in that courthouse.
So then, now are we going to need more vehicles, too?
No. I just bought a new transport van out of my jail tax money last year, and we have enough vehicles. We will not need any extra vehicles.
Further questions, Madam Commissioner?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Well, I don't want a chance an accident happening, so I'll say aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Comments, Mr. Cordez?
I don't have anything today, thank you.
Okay. Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Flanagan?
I don't have any reports, but I would like to meet in executive session with the commissioners concerning potential litigation.
Commissioners report.
Commissioner Vacy?
Yeah, the dog warden would like to extend the hours at the dog pound, starting June the 18th. And I thought we would probably need a resolution for this. And if he wants to start it on the 18th, we should either discuss it now or vote on it. And his extended hours would be from, well, these wouldn't be extended, but the new hours would be from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM on Monday. Tuesday through Friday would be 8:00 AM to 6:30. And Saturday would be 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Mr. Cordez, you worked that out with the dog warden? Is that correct?
Well, that's correct, Commissioner. I wasn't aware that it required a resolution, but I did send a copy of what we were doing to the board for informational purposes.
Is this what you're recommending?
I suppose.
Well, it would just give the public a better opportunity, actually, to redeem their dogs or to buy tags after they get out of work.
Are you moving for approval, then?
Then I would move to approve it.
Okay, then I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vancy?
Nope.
Out of the vote?
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye. I thought you said, is there any more discussion?
When you said no, I thought you...
No.
I said aye.
Is there anything else? Commissioner Vacy? You have other items?
No, that's all I have.
Commissioner Moore?
I'd just like to report that the rock is home in downtown La Grange, and he seems like a happy person now, so I just thought I'd share that with everybody. They did raise about over $4,000 for the students in La Grange, so, in case people were wondering, the 18-ton rock is home.
Was it there in time for graduation?
Yes, it was, and it's painted and ready to go.
I understand the rock is back, but somebody's going to jail?
Yeah, well, I wasn't going to bring that up.
Is it anybody we know?
Well, yeah, it is.
I didn't know. No, my muscular dystrophy is having a fundraiser next Thursday, and as most of you all know, you probably have some friends going to jail. Somehow, they didn't come after me, but they went after my wife, and after a couple of days of thinking whether or not to help her out, I think I should, so...
I think you should, too.
I don't know, I guess I'm not very good at making meals, so, but if you know anybody that's going to jail on behalf of this fundraiser, I think it'd be a worthwhile project to help anybody out of jail that's going in for this fundraiser.
So you are publicly stating that you would like us to get her out of jail?
Yeah, well, yes. Because it would help me get out of the doghouse.
Well, I don't know, I think maybe she ought to stay there, then.
I got a revolving door, so... That's it.
Thank you. Any old business?
I have none.
New business?
None.
I have none.
Court correspondent?
I hope the reading be waived.
Second?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
And I apologize, I forgot to put on public.
It's good.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? Elizabeth?
Just two quick comments or requests at some point about information, perhaps. One, I noticed the sodium chloride bit, and it has seemed to me, excuse me, Elizabeth Rumics, R-U-M-I-C-S. It has seemed to me that there have been environmental questions about using sodium chloride for roads in the wintertime, and I wonder if this has been looked at or will be looked at, and some less harmful substitute perhaps might be a possibility. The other thing is, I've been interested in recent agendas to notice the amount of money per meal, which is used for the prisons, I believe, and it seems to me extremely low, which is perhaps wonderful. But again, my question is, is anyone looking at what is being served nutritionally and otherwise? And is any sort of report made or occasional investigatory visits made? Similarly, for Golden Acres, is there any sort of oversight which might be brought to bear by an outside group, so that the public can know that these inmates, whether unwillingly or otherwise, that these inmates are indeed being properly and humanly taken care of?
Excuse me? Well, I answered the Golden Acres question, then I'm going to ask one of the sheriff's deputies to respond to the jail issue.
I can respond to Golden Acres. We have our own in-house food service workers and cooks that are trained out there. We also have a certified supervisor. In addition to that, we have a nutritionist on staff on a consulting contract that comes in and reviews the menus for nutritional content, with also our on-staff, although contracted, and not as an employee, but on-staff physician for the home, and our DON. So those issues are constantly monitored, constantly looked at, and there is actual food cards and charts for each resident at our county home. And that's one of the areas that Medicaid comes in and reviews very heavily, so it's constantly monitored. I hope that suitably answers that question. With that, I'll defer to, I believe, somebody from the jail on the inmate issue.
Thank you, thank you. I was looking at Doug, and I couldn't remember. You'll have to come to the podium, please, for the camera. Lieutenant Newman, I believe you're still in charge at the jail operations?
I've recently been moved over to court security.
Oh, but you could really answer this question.
However, in regards to that question, with the quality of the food that the inmates are receiving, our grand jury comes through and inspects us four times a year. They also eat the same food that the inmates eat. We are contracted with Aramark Corporation to supply the food services to the jail. They have to meet certain standards. They have to have a dietitian on staff. All the meals are prepared or planned out at least 30 days in advance. We're inspected by the Health Department. And I believe our cost right now is about 96 cents a meal. And the costs will fluctuate from month to month, depending on our jail population. The less inmates we have, the more we're going to pay for meals. The more inmates you have, the less you pay.
Thank you, Lieutenant Newman. I hope that helps you, Elizabeth.
Well, another thing, when I was out there, I also noticed the inmates, also, you guys are training them for another career in food service, because when I saw it, most inmates were working on the food, which helps bring your cost down per plate, right?
That is correct.
Because you're not paying labor fees, which is why a lot of these per-plate costs are so high.
We do have to supply them with, Aramark with some inmate workers, and that does help to keep the cost of food down.
No, I've eaten out there. It's not what I would call, you know, the holiday, but the food is edible, and it's suitable.
Thank you. Bob Kish?
Yes, thank you. Public announcement. I've been told in this very room that you can get copies of the meetings as they go on, and video copies, that is. And I got a bit of a runaround, and I never did get my copies, as of yet. And I spoke with the prosecutor, and he said they are available and will be made available if you take copies, or rather tapes, to the administration office, which I did, about four. They got handed back to me today, because they don't seem to have the ability to make copies. We're going to spend $76 million probably with interest on this building, because I know $10,000 comes to about $22,000 at only $98 a month. And we can't afford to make copies.
We don't have the dubbing equipment, but we did talk about purchasing it. You may have already ordered it, for all we know. Did you, Yvonne?
Well...
We got three people talking here. Mr. Cordez, you want to address the situation? You want to defer to Ms. Newton?
Well, first, I don't know what the cost of building has to do with your tapes, so I don't think sarcasm is warranted in the matter. So that's number one. Number two, I don't know who in the prosecutor's office told you the tapes were available. The college was making duplicate tapes. They were under no obligation or contract to do that. I believe that you contacted them on your own to see if you could get a copy. We do not, as a matter of point, have the ability, as Ms. Vacy indicated, to make those tapes. I'm not completely sure that we're obligated to make those tapes. We have to make public records available for inspection. The official public record of the board proceedings are the board journals. Ms. Blair is responsible for those, and she keeps them available, and copies of the resolutions can be obtained that way. In order to satisfy certain demands of the public, the board is going to expensive funds and try to make available the videos of these meetings. I don't believe you've gotten the runaround, you just haven't gotten what you wanted, because we don't have the capability to produce that.
Well, I was told in this room that they were available for $10.
I didn't tell you that.
No, you did not.
Thank you. Okay, so I suggest next time, before you indicate that you get the runaround, that you come up and speak with myself.
Okay.
You did speak with my assistant, you did give her the tapes. I did indicate to her that when in fact, we were going to be able to provide copies of the meetings on video, that we would provide them on our own videos, that we don't want people bringing in videos and be responsible for them and copying on to, whether they be new or old, or you, you know, you ran the movie over my video of my dog from 10 years ago, whatever, all right? So I asked her to return those to you, which she did. When we have the capability to produce those videos, I will more than willingly have those things done for you. But I don't believe you've gotten the runaround. You just have not achieved success at getting those tapes, and you were informed that we didn't have that capability. That's not the runaround, that's a matter of fact.
Well, I should have been told this at the beginning, and I wouldn't have bothered. Well, I should have been told this at the beginning, and I wouldn't have bothered.
You were directed to the college, and the college told you they didn't want to get involved in it. Is that not correct?
Not originally.
Well, I cannot be responsible for what the college told you either.
Okay. It's neither here nor there. My name is Robert Kish. I live in Alari, Ohio. I'm not Paul Revere, but as stated in that little blue booklet, that they would like to have more audience participation. I'm trying to participate. There aren't that many people here from Ascenton, but I'm trying to get the message out that the British aren't coming, but reappraisals are coming, because I heard your remark at the very last meeting, that, how are we going to pay for it? Whether it got picked up on TV, I don't know, but I heard your remark, reappraisals are coming. On May 24th, 2001, that was the day of that last meeting, a day that will leave an infamy in the wallets of every man, woman, and child in Lorain County. The tower of infamy was approved by a two-to-one vote. Carpe diem. It will cost approximately 47,000 gallons of gasoline. Comes to approximately 165 gallons of gasoline for every man, woman, and child in Lorain County. One if by land, two if by sea, then their seven-story tower of infamy and scoundrels shall be. Washington, D.C. has its Blair House. Lorain County will have its Blair Tower. Security, a literal smokescreen. The ladders reach 105 feet at the fire department. Somebody said, while standing on a warship in Lake Erie, damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead. To paraphrase, torpedoes. To paraphrase, damn the taxpayers, full speed ahead. Perry's Monument. Admiral Hazard, which is quite a name, Perry. Muchos gracias, vaya con Dios.
Thank you, Bob. And the Blair House is at 131 Yonker Court, and that's what the sign says there. I don't know about Washington. It's 10:45, and we have an appointment with Judge McGuff from the common pleas court requesting $60,000 in funding for six months of personnel expense for the linkage program. Good morning, Judge McGuff and Therese Ward, who is the linkage's director.
I would also indicate that Amy Levin is here from the mental health board.
Thank you.
Again, as I spoke to the commissioners last year, when I told you that I would be back for linkage money, here I am again, as the commissioners are well aware. We are assessing supervision fees. We've asked you for a two-year grace period in order to allow that fund to be sufficient to pick up some of the costs of this project. In order to continue the linkage project for another year, Amy Levin and the mental health board are picking up the tabs for the mental health person who is providing onsite services. Greg White in the Lorain County Prosecutor's Office has generously come to the rescue with funding for the drug and alcohol portion of the onsite programming. That money will be coming out of his, I don't want to mistake here, Bob, it's either the forfeiture account or the...
Apple jet?
Yeah, one or the other, but one of those accounts is providing funding for the drug and alcohol board, and so we are coming to the commissioners asking for 60,000, which would be the, which would substitute for the criminal justice portion that we used to get from the state. It is my belief that this will be the last time that I will appear before you, that in the future, we will be able to fund this out of the supervision fees that are now being collected. I think if the commissioners have specific questions, I know I've been here several times and talked about linkage, and I know you've got a very lengthy agenda today, so if anyone has questions about what linkage does or how we do that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Judge McGuff, can you just take a few minutes for the public's benefit to explain the linkage program?
The linkage project was developed for those people who have both mental health issues and substance abuse, drug and alcohol issues. We found that in terms of looking for available community sanctions for people, that drug and alcohol services were not equipped to provide those services to people who had mental health issues. Mental health programming was not equipped to provide mental health programming to those people who were substance abusers, and we were finding that there was a substantial population that had both. We began providing onsite services. So the first thing that linkage does is provide onsite services to those people who have both issues. The second thing that linkage does, of course, is cross-training between the criminal justice system, the mental health system, and the drug and alcohol system. And perhaps the most important thing that linkage does is a quick and dirty screening of everyone who pleads to or is found guilty of a felony-level offense, so that we look at getting folks to the right resources the first time. We look at those people who are most amenable to community-based corrections as opposed to those people who should be in prisons. We look at what available services we have and how to match offenders with services. I think everybody would agree that if you get the right offender to the right service the first time, it's cheaper, it's more efficient, it's better for the offender, it's better for the community, better for the taxpayers.
This will tie in, hopefully, with the evaluation center that will go into the Justice Center?
Actually, the linkage project will develop into the evaluation center.
Correct.
That's what the evaluation center will be, is the linkage project. It will be expanded just a bit, and that's what it will, that's what it will be. That's what we're doing now that will eventually go in. And I guess, as presiding judge of the Lorain County Court of Common Pleas, I feel compelled, Mr. Kish, to respond to you. If you would like to come to our courthouse, I would be happy to have you. I'd like to have you sit in Judge Janice's court during a criminal trial. I would like to have you sit in my court. In fact, there's a criminal trial going on over there right now that perhaps you would like to come and sit in, and perhaps you'd like to sit in Judge Betleski's chair. And I want to take the opportunity to thank the commissioners for approving the justice system. I know this has been a long struggle. I know it's been a difficult decision, and I know that we have only begun, but I can't let those kinds of comments go. This is just way, way too important. So again, thank you, and if the commissioners have any questions, I would be happy to respond to them.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe your request this morning is for $60,000 for the year?
It is. That is correct.
Okay. And Mr. Roca, see, we have funds available to authorize this 60,000?
Commissioner, a good question. There was nothing formally appropriated for that, only because this was, for lack of a better term, a negotiated-type thing, but there, if the board chooses, there are ample unappropriated ones available.
I would just like to include one comment. You know, mental illness has a stigma attached to it. Public thinks mental illness is just, somebody's crazy. Well, that's not the truth. Mental illness is an illness just like heart disease, cancer, or any other illness, and a lot of times can be treated with just medication. But there are times when families and the mentally ill person does not realize that they're mentally ill until something drastic happens. And to me, that's why this evaluation center and this linkage program is so important, because these people need to be evaluated, families have to realize that it is an illness that has to be treated, and treated hopefully before a serious crime or a suicide. You know, I have often talked about filiagi, the filiagi case, and then they said, oh, well, it was Twinkies? Well, that boy was in the court system as a child, and if we would have had this system in place where people could have been evaluated as juveniles, maybe they could have detected that he had a mental illness and probably, hopefully, could have prevented maybe a murder. And the same thing that happened with the deputy sheriff that was shot in Lorain, another mentally ill person. But we didn't have a system in place to talk to this person. And so many times, when it's a suicide issue, who do we have that can intercede, that can go out there and talk this person out of what their intention is or what their head is telling them? So to me, mental illness, a very serious illness, and I thank you and your department and staff, and Amy and her department, for what they're doing in the mentally ill areas. And I hope it continues and just grows till we can save a lot more people. As it stands now, we evaluate these people after they commit a serious crime, and that's what we do in the jails. And the sheriff is here, and he can probably verify this, but they're evaluated after the crime. What about before the crime, when they're detected? You know, when something small happens, when somebody detects, and not saying, oh, well, it's just a bad child, you know, just, let's say, it's just, the child's bad, when it could be a mental illness, and somebody has to realize that. And I'm really grateful that our system is finally taking notice. And I guess Senators Strickland and some of the other senators have passed some bills where we're going to have mental ill courts or some, mental courts or something?
There is a model for mental health courts akin to drug courts, and I think that you may find some of those in the larger counties. I would think that, in all fairness, we would probably not do that here for two reasons. To set aside a separate court, our population is probably not statistically large enough. However, I think the more important argument is that what we have done in this county, rather than set aside specific drug courts or specific mental health courts, is we have trained the judiciary so that all of us are using the same modeling.
Do we, my understanding that we have drug courts now, it's not that we have a separate courtroom or a separate judge for this? The same courtrooms are used?
You do not in the adult system. In the adult system, all of the general division judges are trained in drug court modeling. That is the theory that we use under Senate Bill Two. So if you want to say that perhaps Lorain County has five drug courts at the adult level, that wouldn't be far off the mark. In the juvenile court, you have obtained specific grant funding for two specific drug courts. That is the juvenile drug court that Judge Lilly runs and the family drug court that Judge Burrows runs. And those have specifically set aside dockets and specific criteria. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
And again, I thank the commissioners for your courtesy and for your assistance.
Thank you, Judge McGuff. Amy Levin from the mental health board, did you want to make any comments this morning?
Sure.
I think this is a wonderful cooperative venture that Judge McGuff has outlined today, so I'd like to give you an opportunity to comment.
This has been an important initiative. It started initially with grant funding from the state, and I think it's important to note that Lorain County has benefited from this and is now funding it locally, which is, I think, appropriate. In terms, I wanted to speak to the issue of finding these problems earlier. One of the things that has happened in the last year is that we've been fortunate enough to get a grant from the Department of Mental Health to look at young people who have difficulties succeeding in the juvenile system that is currently in place. And that funding, I think, is, it was started at about $600,000 annually, and we have been able to find some very excellent evaluators, so we're doing a good job of assessing these young people. Our hope is that no young person that would benefit from treatment will end up inappropriately placed in a state facility. The program is a model program, and it is looked at around the state as a best practice, so you can feel good about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And I, personally, I believe the evaluation is very important.
I'll move for approval of the $60,000 just requested for the funding of this program. Second?
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Also, I wanted to mention, Commissioner Blair, Monday, we're going to have a meeting in regards to crisis intervention, and that will, the sheriff is invited in, and so is our chief of police from the city of Alari, and Amy and others. And we're going to be discussing crisis intervention training for our police departments, 911, and whoever else has to be involved.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. It's almost 11 o'clock. I see that North Ridgeville Mayor Deanna Hill is here. You want a break? Okay. We're going to take...
Can we do a big old session of five minutes?
Again.
Could you?
Oh, okay. Well, then...
Why don't we do that?
But only five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So move? Did you move?
I'll move.
A second? For the executive session personnel, five minutes, so we'll come back at 11.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we need to go to the 11 o'clock, which is Montwenty Community Development Director regarding tax abatement for Beckett Air in North Ridgeville, and welcome Mayor Hill.
Good morning, commissioners. I will turn the microphone over real quickly to the treasurer for the city of North Ridgeville, Jim McVeigh. They are here today. They have negotiated an agreement, a tax abatement agreement, with Beckett Air in North Ridgeville, and Jim would like an opportunity to explain to the commissioners what the company is planning in terms of their expansion as well as job creation. Jim?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. McVeigh.
Good morning. Just to give you a little background, maybe first, we have RW Beckett, Beckett Gas, and Beckett Air, all three companies in North Ridgeville. RW Beckett's been there roughly about 60 years. They're all three excellent companies. We have tax abatement now on Beckett Air, Beckett Gas. They have far exceeded what they've asked for employee-wise. Before you today, Beckett Air is looking to expand. They're going to add a 60,000 square foot addition to their present building. They are going to be adding 50 new employees. They're looking for, on the building itself, the building's going to be 2,700,000, 60,000 square foot addition. They're looking for 10 years' abatement on a sliding scale, starting at 100 percent, sliding down to 80 percent. On the personal property, they're looking at 5,200,000 for machinery and equipment, inventory, furniture, and so on. Same sliding scale, 100 percent to start and down to 80 percent. Again, they're looking at 50 new jobs, a new payroll of 1,200,000. They are going to donate to our school system, 17,500 each year, 50 abatements in effect.
How much was that?
They do that with other companies, by the way. Beckett Gas, I believe, gives the schools 25,000, and the first Beckett Air abatement gives them 6,000, so they've been very generous with their schools. Plus, the city has a tax-sharing agreement. All the new jobs, we share our income tax on all the new jobs, 50/50 with the schools. As I said, they've been an exceptional company for us. They always exceed whatever they ask for employee-wise, so we're very pleased to have them. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. McVeigh?
So the city's in support of this abatement?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we are.
And Beckett is happy with this abatement?
Yes. They wanted a little higher abatement, but we knocked it down a little bit.
And the schools are...
Schools are on board with us. We have a tax review committee that the schools actually sit on, and they are on board with us.
So they're supportive of this?
Do you have a letter from the schools?
With our taxes-sharing, income tax-sharing agreement with the schools, in the agreement for giving them half of our income tax, they have waived their right in that agreement to any tax abatement.
Do we have documentation regarding that?
Yes. Yes. Ron has the agreement.
Mr. Tweny, any comments for the board regarding this?
I would note that we did submit this to the assistant prosecuting attorney, Mr. Ennis, for his review. He determined that there are three places that there, we will identify as typographical corrections that need to be made, so we will ask the commissioners, as well as the company and the city, to initial those corrections. And it has to do with the state law and the level of abatement. You can do abatements less than 75 percent...
As I said, they've been an exceptional company for us. They always exceed whatever they ask for employee-wise. So we're very pleased to have them. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. McVeigh?
So the city's in support of this abatement?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we are.
And Beckett is happy with this abatement?
Yes. They wanted a little higher abatement, but we knocked it down a little bit.
And the schools are...
Schools are on board with us. We have a tax review committee that the schools actually sit on, and they are on board with us.
So they're supportive of this?
Do you have a letter from the schools?
With our taxes sharing, income tax sharing agreement with the schools, in the agreement for giving them half of our income tax, they have waived their right in that agreement to any tax abatement.
Do we have documentation regarding that?
Yes. Ron has the agreement.
Mr. Twain, any comments for the board?
I would note that we did submit this to the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, Mr. Ennis, for his review. He determined that there are three places that there, we will identify as typographical corrections that need to be made. So we will ask the Commissioners as well as the company and the city to initial those corrections. And it has to do with the state law and the level of abatement. You can do abatements less than 75% under Section C. Section D is a permission that allows for greater than 75% abatement. And in air, the item C was identified three places in the document when it should have been item D. We do have the documentation from the school board, the resolution that was actually passed. And we also have a letter from the company that will be attached as a part of this mailing that indicates that Beckett is current with all taxes owed, which is a requirement of abatement agreements as well. So we have all of the paperwork, we believe, in order for approval by the Commissioners to be submitted to the state.
Okay. So we have the schools, the cities, and Beckett all agreeing to this. You just need our blessing. Is that what you're asking?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor Hill, is there a comment you want to make this morning?
Good morning. Yeah, I believe it actually is state law that provides that if there's income tax sharing for new employees, then you don't need the agreement of the schools anyway. But as Mr. McVeigh explained, we have a tax abatement review board, which consists of representatives of the city and of the schools. We discuss it. We go through the proposed abatement, and full approval was given. Then it goes to our city council. Approval was given. Then it comes to the county commissioners. And if you give approval, then it goes on to the state for approval. And then the abatement is granted.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Are there questions for anyone?
Yes, I, I have some. You know, if this newest abatement is approved by the board, the abatements will be nearly $18 million that Beckett has received since 1993. And Beckett appears to me to be a large, stable company. Why does the city feel that Beckett deserves another abatement?
Well, I'm not sure your total figures are correct. I'd have to go through those. Secondly, a lesson certainly can be learned from Seattle and Boeing Corporation. Boeing Corporation was the largest company in the state of Washington, if not, in Seattle, if not the state of Washington. So they took it for granted and said, yeah, well, they've been here forever, and they have lots of employees, and they have all their buildings, and they have all their inventory and their equipment. So, well, regardless of what they're asking for on abatement and working with them, we'll have to think about it. And then no big offer came forward. Well, here's the lesson. They're not going to Chicago. And just because it's not used, tax abatement is not to be used or withheld as punishment for somebody who has done well, a company that has done well. What we want to do is encourage further expansion. As Mr. McVeigh said, I think they've been there 60 years. They've always exceeded their projected employees and inventory. So they've been a very good company. They are the biggest employer in the city of North Ridgeville. I certainly support it, and so did city council, and so did the schools.
Tax abatements do punish the residents still, because whatever is abated, the residents sooner or later are going to pick up.
Well, no. I would disagree with that. I was in education for 26 years, so I'm certainly familiar with the subject of tax abatement. What you have a choice of is either no further employment, no new buildings, no personal tax coming into the city and the county and everybody else who takes a piece of the pie, and you have vacant land. Or you have new employees. You have expanded taxes on the property, and you have new income tax, and you have new personal tax as well. So it's not, it's not something that you're withholding from people or that you're asking citizens to do. What you are saying is, all right, you want tax abatement, we will negotiate with you, because in the end, what we want are those new jobs and those increased property taxes, to be quite frank, which, long-term, helps to pay for services that people within the community want, need, and deserve. So it's almost like, do you short-term say no to injure your long-term future? It's something that every community deals with, and it's there, and you have to deal with reality, not what you would like.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments? Question or base?
No, yeah, I'm going to ask this. Have you looked at tax increment financing? I understand the Westerly Serp is also very important, that we'll bring other industry and businesses into North Ridgeville. And the funding is not available for that. Have you looked at the tax increment financing?
Yes. We're aware of what it is. But this is not their request. Their request...
I understand what their request is, but the city can suggest it.
Well, yeah, you can suggest anything. But if a company comes to you and they are requesting this, then you negotiate with them. That is the process that we followed.
And what are we giving them, 100% or 75%? Is that the limit?
It's a, it's a declining amount.
75% is the limit? The maximum that we can give?
No.
No, you can give 100% as long as you follow one of those two sections.
What are we giving?
This is on a sliding scale. It starts the first year, and first year only at 100%. And then after year five, I think it's down to 80%.
It's 10, 10 years, I believe. It starts at 100% and goes down to maybe $1,000.
Excuse me. Mrs. Vassy asked, well, then, what, what's to negotiate if it's 100%? You have the document, I believe.
I have it.
And if you looked at it, you would see that it declines from 100% the first year down to 80% in the 10th year.
So does the value on the equipment depreciate? So I imagine that taxes would depreciate also, decline.
So, so does tax abatement, then?
Well, that's, that's what happens. When the personal property depreciates, I imagine the tax would depreciate, and so would the abate.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Are there further comments? If not, we'll throw to...
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and Mr. Twain. Okay. Do we need to return back to executive?
No, Commissioner, I'm going to do it right here.
Oh, okay. Is this the agreement we're supposed to sign?
I think Ron has the original. Wes, I got...
Yeah, there'll be changes to that agreement coming. I'll be forwarding them. Ron, do they have the agreement in front of them now, Ron, or is mine just a copy?
Yours is a copy. We sent copies up, a copy up to the clerk. They should have that. We are getting the original signed right now so that we can leave that with the clerk and the $500 check for the state so that this could be processed yet this week.
So they just need to initial what's in their, in their custody now, or is something
They need to initial what we're going to give to the clerk, Ron and Blair.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ron. Okay, Commissioners. I have received, well, the county payroll department down in the orders office has received a request for back PES non-contributions on an employee who was employed in the Cedar program in 1979. The...
Who's requested this?
PERS, State Personal Employment Retirement Assist, Employee Retirement Assistant.
For who?
For an employee who was employed in the Cedar program back in 1979.
Are they still with the county?
No. Apparently, for reasons that research has not been able to reveal, there was no contributions paid on this employee. The contributions at the time would have been approximately $160. But because they weren't paid, there's interest on that contribution of $211. And, excuse me, the employer's contribution would have been 262. The interest is 211. It's 347 on that. Because we failed to pay the PERS Cedar, the county, and I say we, it's the county, because it was a county program at the time, we're also responsible for the employee's share, which is $160, and the interest on that is $211. And I'm rounding these numbers, but the grand total is $981.72 that PERS is requesting we pay. That includes interest and contributions on this employee that the county failed to pay PERS for in 1979. The employee wasn't in the Cedar program. I initially had some concern about where the funding for this should come from and whether this actually was a general fund liability. After speaking with council a bit on this and researching it, the county is ultimately responsible for these programs that we have, whether it be Cedar or grant money that somebody wasn't paid PERS out of grant money 10 years ago or 15 years ago. Ultimate responsibility is going to fall to the county, and ultimately, the county's resource are the general fund. So we, we therefore have to pay this. The reason I'm bringing this up now without putting a cover letter or greater explanation and writing on this is that we have to make our PERS payment within the next 10 days. If we don't pay this, there'll be additional problems with PERS. The orders office is getting a little bit antsy on this, and I told them I would act immediately to discuss it with the board. I'm therefore asking for a resolution authorizing me to sign and pay the $981.72 to PERS to liquidate this liability.
I just have a question on how it came from PERS. Is this an employee seeking retirement? Is that...
Yes, the employee is seeking retirement, and they're going back, and PERS is researching their prior service time. And I didn't mean liquidate, I meant eliminate this liability. I apologize for wrong phrasing there.
Kim, how long was this employee employed by the county?
This period of time is from June 1st, 1979, to September 30th, 1979. That's the time that's being contested right now. And we have verified that the person was an employee in the Cedar program in Lorraine County.
What department was that?
It would have been under ETA. Cedar was, Cedar is the predecessor to ETA.
And became JTPA.
Did you...
JTPA.
Did this come about because of what you're working with, or is this because...
It would have come about either way. But they, it is part of that whole...
I'm just glad that now they report to you.
Well, I, I'm, I'm working on that. I'm not fully sure that we have a complete handle on that. But as you know, I've been keeping the Commissioners informed of my movements with ETA and the menagerie of infrastructure they have over there. And we'll be slowly, but we are lassoing that operation for greater accountability.
Mr. Ennis, did you want to comment?
If I may, Commissioners, the situation is, as you know, ETA is kind of changed from time to time under the law as to what it is and whose jurisdiction and so forth. Even though at the moment, those people are not county employees, at this time of, in the law, they were, it was also permissible at that point of time for employees to waiver that contribution. And that's what happened with this employee for a period of four or five years. Unfortunately, and they have to sign a new waiver form each year, unfortunately, we're missing the document for one year. And in all honesty, Jim's taking a little hit on this. He wanted me to pursue this, but I investigated it. It's, it's a government rule. You have to have that piece of paper, and they don't take any excuses, no matter how, you know, we sit there and show that for four years in a row, it appeared that the employee did waive it. We can't just come in and say, it's logical that they also, that this person also waived it for that particular year. Their rule is that you have to have that waiver.
Every year, even though the employee is no longer employed?
Yes. Commissioner, the county order has waivers for a few years before this period of time, and they have some waiver forms for periods of time after this.
But how do you find the employee? If the employee moves, how do you find that employee signing his waiver?
No, no, you sign them at the time of the contribution.
Right, at the time.
And we're responsible under law to maintain those documents until such time as they are retired or there's not going to be any benefits paid. I appreciate Ms. Dennis rescuing me on this. I was going to be a little bit muted, silent on the point, but they do have some of the forms before this period of time, and they have some signed forms after the period of time. But they do not have a signed form for this period of time, which would lead me to conclude that the employee probably waived it the entire period of time, but we're missing a form, and therefore, we're responsible for the time.
So help me to understand. Does the employee have to sign off every year?
Yes.
At that time, though, not now? You can't do it at all now.
Retrospectively, you can't. It, this would be a retrospective. It'd be 20-something years ago. What you do is you get them to agree prior to not making the contribution. So it's a beforehand election, not a retrospective election. We're required, unless the employee makes a signed-off affirmation that they do not want us to pay into the PERS system at the point of issue, at the time of issue, then we have to pay it. We cannot come back retrospectively and say, oh, by the way, sign this, we didn't pay.
Yeah.
All right. We are missing a form for that period of time in the payroll department downstairs.
Further discussion? Sounds like an obligation, is what I'm hearing you say.
Right. And in all fairness to our current people, who knows? You know, this could have been lost 20 years ago, so...
I hope you don't think we're beating you up. I appreciate the fact that you're finally taking care of this.
I was just, thank you.
It's just my opinion that the time and expense of challenging it with the likelihood that if we delay it, we'll get further penalties against what I consider the likelihood of, and I've made some contacts, and I'm being told it won't change. It's my recommendation that we're, we'd just be sending good money after bad at this point.
So I would move to pay the $981.72 contribution for PERS.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Include your business?
I'll second.
Are we adjourning or going back in? Oh, that was taken care of.
We're adjourning. Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
We're adjourning.